Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. Tonight is Monday, November 17th, 2025. It's 7:31 PM. And we're present in room D205 of the Mount Lebanon High School with public participation also available via Zoom. We have some friends from Jefferson Elementary who I heard saying Jefferson is the best, J E S is the best, to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much for having us. Brett Bellwitz, I'm the proud principal of Jefferson Elementary. We brought some of our J E S superstars tonight to lead us into the pledge and then to share a little something that they put together that helps to share what they feel about Jefferson Elementary and why they feel J E S is the best. So we welcome Nina Mackey. Come on up, Nina. Avery Campbell. Maddie Flynn. Isla Panzik. Estelle De Silva. Eddie Song. And Amelie Duddy. We lost a couple superstars to illness and baseball tonight, so. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, rule.
So at Jefferson Elementary, our school-wide initiative is the J E S superstars, and it exemplifies being respectful, responsible, and ready each and every day in all of the different ways. Every week, we acknowledge one student K through five who has exemplified that. And tonight, we have our fifth grade superstars who have been acknowledged thus far this year, each of being the lucky superstars. They spent some of their own time during lunch and recess putting together a little something to share how they feel about Jefferson Elementary. And they certainly have the reputation and the responsibility as the leaders in the school, and they certainly don't take it lightly. So here we go, Nina.
We come to school to learn and grow. At J E S, we are the show. Every day is a learning class where superstars do their best. Helpful, smart, and always kind. You'll never leave your memories behind.
A school like J E S is hard to beat because everyone is so sweet.
Be respectful, responsible, and be ready. Those are the things that makes J E S steady.
J E S teachers are so cool. They bring a joy to this.
Also helpful and full of cheer. They're the reason we are here.
J E S is the best.
Spoiled line. Thank you guys very much for kicking us off. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Gensel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Antunes?
Here.
All members are present. Thank you. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting held on October 13th, 2025, the discussion meeting held on October 13th, 2025, and the regular meeting held on October 20th, 2025. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, thank you. We are up to the Board Report section, and we're leading off with two of our middle school leaders from Jefferson, Judah Rogers and Henry Zadecki, presenting on behalf of Student Council.
Good evening. My name is Judah Rogers. I am here as an Executive Board member of the J M S Student Council to give you a glimpse into the start of our year as an organization. We have begun our year strong with 14 eighth graders on our Executive Board. This board group represents a diverse group of amazing leaders. Our job will be to organize and facilitate the efforts of our general Student Council members to help each project and event run smoothly and successfully. We are committed to meet every Monday after school to make that happen. The General Student Council consists of 73 members, including 28 sixth graders, 28 seventh graders, and 17 eighth graders. We meet as a large group every other Monday to discuss updates on events and ongoing or upcoming projects. The Executive Board determined five committees and co-chairs for this year. Our committees will include Spirit, Random Acts of Kindness, Service, Advertising and Filming, and a brand-new committee called Activities. The Activities Committee will focus on planning small events and games that will happen during the student day to make J M S a more fun and welcoming place to be. Each committee has two to four co-chairs to lead meetings and guide members in planning and executing projects. Our committees began meeting once a week after school last week. Once the icebreakers have helped us make connections, the planning will begin. In order to fund our projects and attendance at leadership events, our council sponsored at a Nothing But Takes fundraiser. The Student Council members took orders for buntlets and vouchers. At last week's meeting, 117 vouchers were distributed. And last Tuesday, we took delivery of 889 buntlets to organize for distribution. The fundraising event culminated in a pop-up buntlet sale after school last Tuesday. Through this fundraiser, we raised $2,416. Thank you for your attention. I would now like to introduce one of my fellow Executive Board members, Henry Zadecki.
Thank you, Judah. Good evening. I'm here tonight to fill you in on events our council has sponsored so far, as well as our experience at this past year's P A S C State Leadership Convention. The month of October was very busy for our organization. We started the month's festivities with our Pink Out Wednesdays. We encouraged students to wear pink on Wednesdays to support breast cancer awareness. We sprinkled positive announcements to encourage awareness throughout the week. To make an impact on this cause, we also sold bandanas, bracelets, sunglasses, lip balm, and stress balls supplied by St. Clair Hospital to students and faculty. Through these efforts, we were able to donate $691. To finish off the month for our Pink Out, we sponsored an all-pink out on October 29th, the last Wednesday of the month. We awarded two prizes per team to those students who showed the most pink spirit that day. To finish the month of October, we also sponsored a Halloween costume contest. Students were encouraged to show off their creativity by coming to school and costumed that Friday. The creativity and imagination that day was amazing. At the end of the day, two winners per team were announced. We are proud to report that the participation in all of these events was inspiring. To get membership motivated, all of the Executive Board members attended a P A S C State Leadership Convention hosted at Union Area High School sponsored by the P A S C Executive Board. On November 7th and 8th, we traveled to Newcastle to experience student-led leadership workshops, roundabout table discussions with Student Council members from all over the state, and two speakers. The main motivational speaker, Scott Bakovich, was truly inspiring. His presentation truly helped to change the way we think about Student Council activities. His fresh and thought-provoking presentation will help us design more engaging activities that will encourage more student participation. Overall, we soaked in the inspiration and enjoyed the opportunity to meet and connect with other student leaders. Our council's off to a great start, and we, as Executive Board members, are thrilled, energized, and ready to lead. Our goal at J M S is to do our part to make a difference both inside and outside of our school. Thanks for your attention and good night.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Board President Report. I have a few district highlights, more than a few district highlights, to share this month. The first thing is that 24 of our high school students have been recognized with letters of commendation for their exceptional performance in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Competition based on their October 2024 PSAT results taken during their junior year. These students placed in the top 50,000 scorers of more than one and a half million students who took the 2024 PSAT as a junior. In recognition of their exceptional abilities and potential for future academic success, the N M S C will honor these students by sending letters of commendation. While commended students do not advance in the competition for National Merit Scholarships, some may still be eligible for special scholarships sponsored by corporations. Sorry, Mount Lebanon High School's N M S C commended students are Henry Asbury, Anna Bailey, Owen Byrne, Soham Dam, Elizabeth Devine, Edward Ursigovic, Alexander Fair, I scooted too quickly, Molly Gill, James Harbaugh, Caroline King, Isabella Lombardi, Santiago Lozada Ivasavish, Adam Melhem, Anna Momorowski, Aiden Osbaugh, Anshul Perdeep, Eleanor Schulte Albert, Samuel Shaw, Lyra Stiglitz, Jaclyn Tang, William Thomas, Siyuan Yang, Madeline Zapko, and Michael Zhu. Congratulations to all of them. The Mount Lebanon High School Class of 2027 is collecting non-perishable food, hygiene items, and monetary donations for the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank from November 17th through the 21st. Families can participate by donating online. There is a link in the district's newsletter and on social media, bringing items to the athletics building adjacent to the high school in door AA7. And for high school students, they can bring non-perishable items to school for collection at homeroom. The 29th Annual Holiday Bells, Mallets, and Drums Concert Series is returning this season. These concerts showcase the extraordinary talent of our students and the strength of our nationally-recognized percussion program. Tickets are selling fast, so purchase yours today at mtlpercussion.com. I'd like to highlight some of the items from November's inclusivity calendar. November is National Family Caregivers Month, which honors the more than 40 million caregivers across the country who support aging parents, ill spouses, or other loved ones with disabilities who remain at home. November's National Native American Heritage Month, which celebrates the heritage and culture and honors the contributions of Native Americans. November 11th was Veterans Day, which is a federal holiday honoring military veterans. The date is also celebrated as Armistice Day or Remembrance Day in other parts of the world commemorating the end of World War I in 1918. On November 20th is Transgender Day of Remembrance, which memorializes those who have been murdered as a result of transphobia and draws attention to the continued violence endured by transgender people. On November 27th is Thanksgiving Day, which is an annual national holiday in the U.S. and Canada celebrating the harvest and the blessings of the past year. And my kids are celebrating a half-day and a four-day weekend. A few updates about the Mount Lebanon School District Board of Directors. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the following members who are concluding their term of service at this meeting. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve alongside these directors and to count them as both colleagues and friends. Erin Gensel began serving in 2021, served as the Vice President of the Board in 2024, has served on the Policy Committee, on the Board of the Mount Lebanon Foundation for Education, and as the Board's PTA Council Representative. Claire Guth began serving in 2021, has served as a member and the Chair of the Policy Committee and as a member of the Parkway West CTC Joint Committee. Anna Maria Johnson began serving in 2021, served as a member and the Chairperson of the District's D E I Committee and has served as the representative to Parkway West CTC Joint Committee. Thank you all so much for everything you've brought to this board and the district for the past four years. It's honestly been a pleasure. And I wanted to open the floor if anyone else would like to share any words for our girls.
Well, what a ride it has been. I don't think the three of you were expecting COVID or any of the other things that hit our doorstep, but each and every one of you handled them with such care and in great stride, and you never gave up, and you always tried to find the best solutions for not just the district, but the community as a whole. And you will be missed greatly. Anna Maria, thank you so much for being my mentor. It has been such a journey, starting here not knowing anything. When it came to like, how do you even sit and like hit the gab, what happens? You always made sure that I was together. I knew where to go and what to do. And I will definitely miss our rides in the snow, Parkway. Claire, thank you so much for stalking me for a couple years. I gotta tell the story. So Claire and I have known each other for years, and she was like, you would be great. And I was like, yeah, sure. And she never gave up. And finally, one day, I was like, I think I'm ready. And she was like, wait, what? And here we are. You are. You're an amazing woman for all the things that you do.
Stalking works.
And we will miss you. And Erin, thank you so much for some of those days. I was like, I have no idea. I'm gonna call Erin. And she was always there, willing to help. And now that you are retiring from the board, I feel like we could go on a little roadshow and do some see-humba. So thank you all so much. You are great, amazing leaders, and we will miss you. But you're not going far, so see you soon.
Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes my report. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Burdick. My report is short this evening because I have two of my peers that will be presenting a fairly large report, and I don't want to take away from their time. Just a few updates from this past month. It has been a really busy fall. I completed the Mount Lebanon Fire Academy about a week ago. They talked me into putting on a mask and strapping on an oxygen tank and going into a burning building. We truly are very fortunate to have the firefighters and first responders that we have in our community, and I learned that firsthand. I don't think that they are going to sign me up to be a volunteer or a paid member of the fire department, but I did learn quite a bit during my time with them. In addition to that, we held our Business Roundtable, the first one of the year. We had about 13 people in attendance. It's an opportunity for us to share with the community, the business community, the things that we're doing here within the school district. It's an incredibly supportive group of people that keep on coming back, and so we're thankful for their time. Veterans Day was a busy day. I spent the morning at Foster Elementary School for their event that honored our veterans here in our community. There were over 25 parents and grandparents that were recognized. It was really nice. And then afterwards, I had the opportunity to read to the first-grade classrooms at Foster, and we read about Veterans Day. And as you all know, first graders always come with very entertaining questions and comments, so we had a really great morning there. And then later on in the week, last week, we had Washington Elementary School's Life Skill Classroom and ABA Classroom. They hosted their annual Friendsgiving, which is a beautiful event in which families and students come together and staff to celebrate Friendsgiving. And then finally, last week, I was invited to the Marching Band Banquet, which was a beautiful event with over 200 people celebrating our marching band, which is a group that we're incredibly proud of as a school district. So it was really nice to be able to see all the students in one room and celebrate the accomplishments of this past year, which was quite busy. And then the last thing that I have is really upcoming events. We have Thanksgiving is here, half-day next week on Wednesday, and then we're out Thursday and Friday. We'll return that following Monday. December 4th, we have our next Superintendent's Coffee from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM in the Central Admin Building. December 19th, we have the Lebo Stars Legacy Games, which are, this is the third year that we will be playing bocce. I haven't heard if any of the administrators have signed up yet. Dr. Thompson, I see you in the audience. Hopefully, he will sign up. Maybe we can compete against each other. You'll beat me and our team. We, I'm just saying, we have not won yet. Maybe one of these years we'll win. And then we begin our winter break on December 20th, and it runs through January the 4th. We hope that everyone obviously has a really nice break. It's a long one this year. And then just some concerts. Our elementary winter concerts are on these dates. All of them will take place at 2:30 PM. So there's a lot of great music to be heard. And then for our secondary winter concerts, we have quite a few of those as well that'll take place over the course of the next five weeks. The final thing I wanted to say was thank you to Anna Maria, Claire, and Erin. It has been a pleasure working with all of you. You were on the board when I started, and for that, I'll be forever grateful for your willingness to believe in me to lead the school district. And you can't get away from us that easily. Two of you still have children in the district. And we will see you all hopefully very, very soon, and you won't forget about us. Thank you. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Davis and Dr. Shulo, who will go through our Student Outcomes Report.
So good evening, Ms. Fleischer, Ms. Crable, Dr. Fries, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to present a number of aggregated data sets relative to our student performance. And more importantly, thank you for your service in helping us achieve these goals. It does not go unnoticed, the amount of time and energy and work you put into being members of the board to help provide us with direction and support as we're working to support our students. So on behalf of the admin team that's here with us, we want to thank all of you for your support as we're working to make sure that our students are successful in the classroom. I mentioned the admin team in the back. Really, our instructional leadership team is here with us, and these results couldn't happen without their leadership and the work that goes on inside our schools every single day. They lead our teachers, and between those and our teachers, we have a lot to celebrate tonight. Obviously, this wouldn't happen without our parents, parents that support our children, support our schools, support our teachers, support our administrators. So definitely a special thank you to the partnership that we have with our families. And obviously, this is a celebration of our students, and we should be congratulating them throughout the course of the night. Overall, you're gonna see, we are continuing to maintain our status as a very high-performing school district, one that is known across the state and one that is looked to for how student success occurs. So I shared this analogy with you last year. This is Serat's pointillism, and Ms. Rodriguez was very proud of me for using this analogy last year, you know, where we take a small dot, and over time, those distinct dots of color applied, and a pattern emerges. But that dot tells a story, right? And this idea of a story is particularly important tonight. As we shared last year, there are thousands and thousands of stories behind this data set, and we want to recognize and celebrate each one of those stories that happened to be the reason that we have the results that we have. What's important to us and the theme behind each of these stories is that we meet kids where they are, and we help them grow. We try to help them achieve their goals. And I know I shared this analogy with you last year, but I wanted to repeat it this year because of that word, story. And if I may, Ms. Altunes shared a piece with us back in August when she welcomed us as a student speaker, and I'm gonna capture just two or three of her sentences, where she told all of our faculty about the importance and the power of story. I'm gonna quote. And so if you ask me, what's the importance of sharing our stories? I would say this. Our stories light the path, not just for ourselves, but for those who come before us, for those who walk beside us, and for those who come after. Because behind every light, every voice that has been found, there is an educator who lifted them out of the shadows and ignited fire from within. These students' stories have our educators walking alongside of them and have been the success that we're gonna talk about tonight. Thank you for allowing me to quote you. Mr. Adams, I'm gonna quote you here in a minute, too.
Get ready. That'd be awkward.
So you saw this analogy last year. This singular individual represents a data set, and as we start to aggregate that data, that individual's data set with their class, impressions about our academic program become a little clearer. And as we take a class, and we start to aggregate that data, we make it into a grade level, those impressions about our academic program become even more clearer. And as we take a grade level and we make it into a building, the impressions about our academic program become more and more clear. And from the building, we move to this district level, which is this high-level overview, or as Schmoker would say, the balcony view, as it is called in the literature, which helps provide us some organizational perspective. The entire report, again, this is a high-level presentation tonight, but the entire report is on our district's website under the Academic tab for any individual who would like to take a look at it. So we talk about our mission, to provide the best education possible for each and every student. And that mission means a lot to us as we welcome our kindergarteners into the school district, and then we assist them as they move through the organization. It is our goal to help them reach their full potential. We provide them with a variety of programs, a variety of curricular programs, a variety of extracurricular programs. All of that is intended to help meet them where they are and help them grow and help them achieve their potential. Now, if I may, I'm gonna quote Mr. Adams. He too spoke to us in August, and his words were equally as powerful as it relates to this idea of meeting people where they are and helping them grow. I'm gonna quote Mr. Adams. As he said, "Mount Lebanon has prepared me not to just handle change, but to coexist with it." "I was able to take so many risks and try so many new things, not just because Mount Lebanon provided me the opportunity to, but because the environment, the passionate teachers, the supportive administrators, the welcoming staff. They encouraged me to." Evidence that we try to meet students where they are and help them grow along their path. And for that, this should be common knowledge for you and for our educators. It is the things that we deeply believe in in our organization. It is our moral purpose. It is our North Star as we try to make sure that we provide a quality education to the students here in this organization. Let's get a recapture of some of those. Every individual has a unique combination of attitudes and attributes that, when recognized, nurtured, and challenged, help them achieve their full potential. Core value to us, this we believe. Each individual has worth and deserves dignity and respect. This we believe. All students can be successful learners. Successful learning builds self-esteem. This too, we believe. Excellence in education is worth the commitment of time, effort, and money. This too, we believe. Learning is the most effective in a safe, caring environment taught by highly qualified teachers. This is evident in our strategic plan. High expectations directly affect performance. Absolutely true. This is what we believe. An educational citizenry is valid to a strong foundation to a democratic society. This becomes part of our moral purpose. These items that we believe in so dearly and we hold so true is surrounded by the things that this organization values and espouses to its students, to its teachers, to its administrators, and to its parents. And our core values are listed here for you. Dr. Shulo and I talked about, you know, so what does the data tell us? And we affirmed again that we believe that this is pointing to what the data is suggesting to us, that students are prepared for a broad range of post-secondary interests, meeting their individual needs at locations not only around this country, but around the world. That's a powerful statement for a high school. Student career interests are addressed, in part, by the partnership with Parkway West Career and Technical Center. We heard from Dr. Copeland and the powerful programming that goes on out there. Students experience a rigorous academic experience aligned to the College Board curricular standards through our Advanced Placement Program. And it is expanding, and our students are finding great success in it. Student diversity is increasing within the student body. And you heard from Dr. Schuman last week, and she illustrated some of that data that articulates that as well. And then student academic performance remains strong, and it is facilitated through our teachers' teaching methodologies, our curriculum that is rigorous and well-aligned to the standards, developmentally appropriate, engaging with students, and that we have instructional resources that support what goes on inside the classroom. Dr. Schuman talked about this last week, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this slide, but you can see the trend lines as it relates to the composition of the student body. It certainly is growing in terms of its diversity. But we are committed to providing a safe, inclusive, and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates this diversity, as this is one of those things that we believe in as an organization. All students, regardless of their background, their identity, or their ability, are supported. We want every student to reach their full potential. So this is the screenshot that Mr. Stengel puts together every year about where our students are declaring that they're going to college. This is the class of 2025. As you can see, our students are spread out among- As you can see, our students are spread out amongst, around the country and places in the world. And our emphasis is to make sure that these, that our students are prepared for life after high school, preparing them to pursue whichever post-secondary interests they are interested in. If I may, I'd like to quote Emma LaFavor, who, who is our graduation speaker, who's, I think illustrates what we try to do with kids. Although the high school experience was unique for each of us, I truly believe that we all take away many lessons from the light shed upon, on the unspoken standards set for Mont Lebanon students. Keeping, keeping up with your work is the bare minimum, but applying your knowledge outside of class is expected in order to understand why we learn these concepts. Teachers assign challenging work, but it forces us to collaborate with each other in order to solve problems and cultivate innovative ideas on our own. I'm going to repeat that sentence. Teachers assign challenging work, but it forces us to collaborate with each other in order to solve problems and cultivate innovative ideas on our own. That is what we strive for here. No matter what subject, I'm back to, back to the speaker. No matter what subject you are learning about in class, you are simultaneously learning skills that are necessary for life outside of the classroom setting. The faculty has molded us into driven people rather than simply successful students. And all of us have gained a great understanding of ourselves through the work ethic we have all developed in order to, able to attend this ceremony, as she was referencing the graduation ceremony. She was a dynamic speaker last year. But I think those words about what we strive to accomplish and hearing it from a senior really makes all the time, effort, and energy that goes into the work that goes into each classroom in all of our buildings every day worthwhile. As I had mentioned, this data is available in greater detail on the web. But just to highlight some of the information for you. So the percentage of our college-bound seniors, our data continues to reflect a community that values the majority of the students are pursuing a post-secondary academic experience. Ninety-five point nine percent of our students are pursuing college either two or four years. When you look into our student data, you'll see that the remaining students, 2.3% are going on to employment. A half a percent of our students is going to the military. And 1.3% of our students declared some other activity after, after high school. As you know, we use Peterson's book to talk about college attendance by difficulty. And as you look at the top three tiers of difficulty, most difficult, very difficult, and moderately difficult, that represents 88% of the students who have declared a post-secondary interest. Most difficult is 6.5%. Last year, it was 5.8%. Very difficult, 39.1%, and last year, it was 34.9%. Moderately difficult, 42.4%. Last year, it was 48.2%. Minimally difficult is 2.6%, and last year, it was 4.3%. And non-competitive is 9.4%, and last year, it was 6.8%. I'm actually really pleased that that last number is growing, as we heard from Dr. Copeland and the value that our students are placing on the trades and the skills and the programming that's available. Our, our society needs students that are in the trades, or that are in the workforce, that are in technology, career education. So I'm so glad that we're starting to see a little bit of a climb, and our students finding interest in that. And I think you heard and you've seen over the years that this, I think they joked, now we have two buses going out. And maybe in years, in future years, it'll be three buses. But ultimately, our kids gaining some interest in that area. Hopefully, you'll see those numbers kind of grow a little bit over time. Obviously, this Peterson's report does not reflect all of the students. It is just the students that are going on to two and, two and four-year colleges. Last year, I mentioned that I had a mistake in the book where I just talked about it being just four-year colleges. I didn't fix the mistake this year, but I guarantee you it's fixed for next year. So if you look at the book, it still says four-year colleges only. I think it's on page six or something like that. Everyone's checking my work now. But next year, I already fixed it. I fixed it in the program for next year. So there is a footnote in the guide. I just want to be clear with the community, that is a two and four-year number. But I promise it is fixed for next year. I'm going to just mention this because you've seen this information last month from Dr. Copeland when he spoke directly to you about this. A hundred percent of our students who took the NCAT exams at Parkway passed. Seventy, eighty-three percent of them with advanced rankings and seventeen percent with competent rankings. Not only did they pass their NCAT exams, you can see seventy-two portable industry credentials were earned last year for our students. That's outstanding. So we're really pleased about our students' not only interest, but their success at Parkway. I'm going to transition to AP, ACT, and the SAT, so work by the College Board. These are some of the standardized tests that we look at in terms of determining our students' progress. And we've had conversations at the, in the boardroom about, kids take AP exams for various reasons, and then they actually sign up to take the test for other reasons. You know, so there's a lot of personal variables that go into this experience by taking an AP class. But I'm pleased to say that our efforts to have kids engaged in a rigorous, quality educational experience through our AP program has grown, not only in the number of courses that we've offered, but the number of kids that we get enrolled into the classes and actually take the tests. We're up to twenty-five AP, AP offerings from AP African-American Studies, all the way down through US government and politics. The full list is in the book. This past year, we had 1,251 AP exams taken. 1,251 AP exams. That's seventy-three point eight percent of those enrolled in a course took an exam. How do our students fare on these exams? So we've used, I've, about six or seven years ago, started presenting the AP Scholar data. And you can see the definitions of the AP Scholar, the AP Scholar with Honors, and this AP Scholar with Distinction. A really, really positive trend line in terms of how our students are performing on AP exams, not only on one AP exam, but on multiple AP exams. We're at a seven-year high with 304 AP Scholars. And I only say seven years because that's as far back as the data I have. So our trend line continues to be moving in the right direction, and we continue to set new standards every year. So 304 AP Scholars in 2025. As for the AP Scholar, that's a student who received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. Last year, we had eighty-seven students do that. AP Scholars with Honor receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams, and scores three or higher on four or more of the exams. Seven-year high last year with seventy-seven students doing that. An AP Scholar with Distinction receives an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams, and scores three or higher on five or more of these exams. Last year, we had an all-time high again with 140 students achieving that distinction. This 304 students, if you go back to the data that I have from the beginning, is a 96.1% increase from the 2018, 2019 school year. It really is moving in the right direction. So about AP students that are scoring three or above. This is a non-duplicated number of students who scored three or better on at least one AP exam. It is a sixty-three point eight, sixty-three point eight percent increase from the 2016, 17 school year. And you can see the positive trend line that we're having. And this is probably a good opportunity for me to pause and really celebrate the Curriculum Council process, because this is where we have had the conversations about making sure that AP, the AP experience is right for all students. We want all kids to engage in that process and to that experience when they're ready. They might not be ready in 10th grade. They might not be ready in 11th grade. But before they get out of here, we want them to have some college-level experience. And our, our Curriculum Council, and our department chairs, and our principals, and our counselors have all talked about trying to make sure that these courses are accessible and open to all students. And I think that's part of the reason that you see these inclines over time, because it really has been a collaborative, collective effort to make sure that our students find Number of AP exams that are scored three or above, 1,178 exams. So remember, I said two slides ago, 1,251 students, 1,700, oh, yeah, 1,251 exams, 1,778 scored a three or better. That's a 94.2% success rate, scoring a three, four, or five. Our, our program is really strong. We have lots of kids engaging in it, and our teachers are really skilled at having our students find success. Yes, our mean scores on 24 of the 25 exams exceed the national average. I've had conversations with you in the past about the one content area that we know is not meeting the national exam or the national, the national mean. We continue to work with that department, with that instructor, continue to provide professional development. I am pleased that our, our mean average is 3.06 this year in that particular subject area, but we're not there yet. And we've got more work to do, and we've got to stay focused. You know, we have to stay focused on what our, our goals at hand are. Some context about our AP students. In relation to all exams that were taken, males took 565 exams with a mean score of 4.08. Females took 680 exams with a mean score of 4.1. And as you can see, the, the College Board uses the, the descriptor another, which I don't know that is appropriate, but that's the one that they provide us with. And we did have 10 students with a mean score of 3.8. Remember, our, our threshold, we use the College Board's threshold for sharing data. On this screen, if there's a dash mark, and this is for all the screens moving forward, if there's a dash mark, there wasn't data available. And if the box is darkened, that means it was an N of less than 10 students, so we don't show it. This is also probably a good juncture to update you about our engagement with underrepresented students in our curriculum. I shared with you last year some of the, the work that we do, where we're trying to identify a student population and making sure they're engaging in higher-level curriculum. Similarly, we're considering our rising ninth graders for this 25, 26 school year. We look at students who historically have earned an A or B, students who are enrolled in Mont Lebanon since at least sixth grade, and students who are historically an underrepresented population or economically disadvantaged. And for the 25, 26 school year, we had 23 students match this profile. Of those 23 students, 19 selected one or more honors classes. And I'm pleased to say 16 of those 19 selected more than one honors class this year. If you remember last year, the majority had taken just one. This year, the majority are now taking multiple honors classes. The other four students, again, it's appropriate for them not to be engaged when you think about their profile and where they are in their educational program right now. That doesn't mean in their 10th grade year, 11th grade year, 12th grade year, we won't get them engaged in some higher-level programming. As we think about AP performance by identity group, students who identify as Asian accounted for 135 of the exams with the highest mean score of 4.33. Students who did not identify their race or ethnicity accounted for 70 of the exams and had a mean score of 4.21. Students who identified as two or more races accounted for 51 of the exams and had a mean score of 4.14. Students who identified as Hispanic or Latino accounted for 103 of the exams and had a mean score of 4.09. Students who identify as Black or African-American accounted for 24 of the exams and had a mean score of 4.08. And students who identify as white accounted for 872 of those exams and had a mean score of 4.04. Every single one of those groups had a mean score above four. That speaks, I think, to what, what goes on inside our classroom. And as you can see on the screen, it's been a number of years before I, since I've had enough students to present to you the, the mean score for the Black and African-American population and their success on our exam. So I'm very pleased and proud that we're seeing those, those numbers emerge a little bit further. Migrating to the ACT. You can see our scores on the left. Pennsylvania is in the center, and the nation is on the right. Just for the audience at home, our, you know, English, our, our score was 25.9. Math was 26.8. Reading was 27.8. Science was 27.1. And our composite was 27.0. I sat before you last year, and we had all-time highs on ACT. We're not quite all-time highs this year, but we didn't miss much of a beat when you look at the numbers that are on the screen. Again, as you, as you know, we've had these conversations in the past. You're well aware that about 2007, 2008, the, prior to that, the ACT was considered a Midwestern test, wasn't really accepted by all colleges or universities. Then it became more widely accepted. It became more interested to our students. We saw students becoming more interested in taking it, and then the whole test optional movement happened. So currently, or in this particular grouping, we have 97 students accounting for those ACT scores. It's important to note, and our counselors are well aware, that we still have more than 2,000 four-year institutions that are currently test optional, and 85 of them are test-free. But it's all, and some of those are pronounced universities, you know, Duke, Northwestern, University of Chicago, Swarthmore, Williams College. But what we have to be mindful of is there's starting to be a little bit of a pendulum swing back. Those that have reinstated exams include Dartmouth, Yale, Brown, Harvard, Caltech, Texas, University of Texas. And with this graduating class, the class of 2026, our graduating class of 2026, you're seeing schools like Carnegie Mellon, Johns Hopkins, UPenn, Cornell, these are schools that our kids go to, are starting to see testing again. So this is, again, the pendulum is starting to swing a little bit, particularly for our, our, our most difficult colleges. And again, it'll be important for us to, might be mindful of this data and how our kids are performing on those exams. Trend data. Well, I really appreciate by using this slide is just to reinforce the message about annual variability. We are going to see a little bit of variation in data from year to year. That is natural. Really, what we are looking for are trends or themes or patterns. That's, that's what we're looking for over time. As you're well aware, one data point or two data points is really not a data set. We're looking for three, four, five data points, and really then starts to show a trend. And that's what we're looking for. And this, I think, as an ACT, kind of shows our consistent performance, but then some trend lines. I already indicated what our performance was, but just repeat it again for this particular slide. English, 25.9. Math was 26.8. Reading was 27.8. Science was 27.1. And our composite was 27.0. So let me give you our 10-year averages, so you can get a sense of how this year, this past year compared to our 10-year average. 10-year average in English is 26.46. So we were slightly down, some little bit of variability. Math, 25.68. Again, this year, we were 26.8. We were, we were up. Reading, 26.98. Our score is 27.8. Science, 26.07. This year's, or this past year's, 27.1. And our composite 10-year average is 26.44, and our composite is 27.0. So we're really kind of looking at those, you know, trends. Obviously, we have to look back in history to learn our lessons, but we want to be present in what's going on in our classrooms and look, look towards the, towards the future. We talked a little bit last year about how the ACT exam as a format is changing, and some of the options that are becoming available to students relative to online paper pencil testing and the design of the test is, is coming into effect, particularly with this September test that just happened this particular school year. Talked about 97 students accounting for the ACT exams. Some demographic data for those 97 students. Again, our composite score was 27.0. Males was 26.4. Females was 27.6. And then the other responses, we had fewer than 10. So you'll see, there see a blank in there, or I just, that is not presented. Students who identify as Asian have the highest composite score of 3, 30.9. And students who identify as white have the second-highest composite of 27.0. Again, we don't have enough of an N count for their other groups. Again, we had 97 kids take it, so I don't have an N count, more than 10, to be able to share the rest with you. Moving to the SAT, similar to the ACT, it's tended to help college admission officers assess the student's likelihood of success in college. The data presented on the screen, our mean scores are above the state and national averages. Our combined score is 1215. That's 162 points higher than the national mean, and 131 points higher than the Pennsylvania Five-year trend data. So as you know, the SAT changed from a three-section test to a two-section test 2016, 17. And at that point, it also moved to kind of more logical and reasoning skills. In our student outcomes report, the book that you have, the one that's online, we were showing all of the sections until we got to a point, every year, we phased out the previous year. So we're at the point where we phased out all of the old SAT presentation data. So now we're just, all the data that's in there is the current test as we're moving forward. I talked about 97 students taking the ACT. We had 352 take the SAT. Again, some performance by identity groups. Males had a combined SAT score of 1193. Females had a combined SAT score of 1238. Students who identify as Asian had the highest combined SAT score of 1291. Students who identify as Asian had the highest combined SAT score of 1291. Students who identified Hispanic or Latino had the second highest combined SAT score of 1225. Students who identify as white had the third highest combined SAT score of 1218. And students who identify as two or more races had the fourth highest combined score at 1166. And students who did not provide a response had a combined SAT score of 1153. The other groups did not have an N of more than 10. Now I'm going to move to some more local tests, talk about the Keystone exams, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Shola to talk about PSSAs. So I talked with the board two years ago about Act 158 and how we were migrating to this idea of parents having the opportunity to consider pathways. So this chart should be familiar to you, I shared it with you last year in terms of what pathways our parents are declaring. So as you can see with the class, the class of 2025, or what we're anticipating with the class of 2026, 332 students who are taking the proficiency pathway, and then you can, you can scale on down through the other pathways that are available to families and students. Board policy, you have to take the test and you have to retest at least once if you weren't successful. State law requires us to offer remediation, we can't mandate it. So we do that. I mean, we work with families, we work with our departments, we try to remediate students that are not successful, and then we give them the opportunity to retest. But parents are becoming more and more aware of these pathways and the implication about them needing to pass a Keystone to graduate or not in finding an alternative pathway. So you, I think over time, if I'm projecting into the future, you're going to see these numbers continue, these pathway numbers continue to climb a little bit. So I shared this with you before, our comparator. IDEXX was a tool that you've heard me mention in the past. IDEXX was a tool that we had available to us. It is no longer in operation, so I don't have, I'm not able to continue this particular graph as we move forward with our comparators. And they did a nice job of coming up with a compositive score, with a composite score. So I'm setting the stage for moving forward where we will break them out by subject area. So I can't give you a composite score, but using this year's data, looking at the Keystone exams for Algebra I, the Mount Lebanon performance was 81.2%. Our comparators is 74.6%, and then you can see the state number is not in that same range of performance. So I'm proud that we continue to be in the mix of where our comparators are performing, and not only in the mix, but I think doing slightly better. So that's Algebra. Moving over to Biology. Mount Lebanon was 82.6% and our comparators are 78.8%. Again, pleased that we're in the mix and pleased that we're continuing to perform well against our comparator group. Our comparator group is listed in the book, I think on page two or three. There's 15 schools from across the Commonwealth that we look at, some schools in the east, some schools in the center of the state, and some schools in the west. If you get, if you want me to, I can, there's a song I can sing for you to list all 15. Please don't take me up on that.
We would love to hear you sing.
Yes, yes.
I'll save it for the retirement.
Yes, it starts with central blocks, so go from there. When you look at the comparator for ELA, our performance from Mount Lebanon was 94.1, our comparator group is 85.9. And obviously, I'm, you know, I don't need to mention, the state performance is well below where our comparators are. So I'm, as you move forward with these graphs over time, you'll start to, you can now, you'll see each one of these exams, or yeah, each one of these exams have this corollary number from year to year to year to year, because with IDEXX going out, we had to go into the state system and pull out the numbers off of their spreadsheet. So these hopefully will be graphs that you'll see moving forward. And then the last piece, you know, this unfortunately is going to be my, my last student outcomes report with you. I say thank you, again, I said it at the beginning, but thank you to you, thank you to our leadership team that's sitting with me, not only the people that are here currently, but, you know, past and present. There have been a lot of educators over my career who have made a positive impact on kids, and that can't be understated. And just to show you the illustration of trend data. This is our, so that you go back to when I first moved into this role. I, I have a couple of graphs from the time that I moved into this chair as the Assistant Superintendent. And you can see that this trend line is slightly down, just a hair to the, it's heading down. I would, I would argue that that's a good thing. This is the trend line about our two and four-year data applications, but I truly do believe that we're getting some separation from that 100% is our kids that are declaring more, going to Parkway or finding more, more value in the trades. I hope you continue to see a slight, a slight decrease in this trend line. The culture in this community is always going to be post-secondary education, that's not going to change. But I hope you start to see more value provided by students to this experience, and I think they're going to find that the employability in these fields and the ability to make a living in these fields will make it more appealing as they move forward. So this trend line obviously is a slight slide, I would, I would argue that I think that's a good thing. So here's AP from my time in this role. You can see in the top left, the number of kids that were enrolled in our AP courses. I would acknowledge that we've, we've added courses over the course of my tenure in this role. But again, as I shared earlier, with our conversations with Curriculum Council and making sure that the culture is one that is encouraging kids to get involved in our AP program, but to have that college experience before they're out of here, is one that has grown over time. I mean, I certainly can remember some conversations that were to the contrary, but I certainly believe that the, the culture and the leadership and the, the desire to make sure kids have these experiences is one that has grown over time. And I think that's a very positive trend line in terms of our kids' enrollment in AP courses. I think this is a good slide that it shows variability year to year, you know, so that's my point that don't look at just one data point in a given year. That one data point could be misleading, don't look at two data points. You need, you need a trend to kind of see where the, you know, where the, you know, what the patterns and the expectations are. So on the left is AP course enrollment, on the right is then our test participation. I'm very pleased, again, that we're seeing significant test participation and it grows over time. Every student that can pass an AP exam and their college accepts that AP exam, they've just saved themselves some money. And they got into college with, you know, one, whether it's an elective or it's a course applied to their program, it's one less college course they have to pay for. So I think this is a great opportunity for kids not only to be enrolled in our course to participate in tests. And then the bottom graph is the non-duplicated number of students who have earned AP credits from us. So I really, again, it's a testament to our AP faculty, not only to our AP faculty, but all of the faculty that support our kids, because some of our kids take some really pressing course, course loads, which then other faculty then support them, you know, as they're moving towards these, these high-demand educational experiences. ACT and SAT, you can see the ACT composite from the time I moved into this role until now. Again, a very positive trend line, I think, in terms of, again, this goes back to, I think, some of the things our students spoke about, is this idea of our teachers are driving us, they're, we're more than students, we're given problems, we're collaborating, we're problem solving. It's those transferable skills that I think we see on these types of exams. The, the content that they have is more, it's not necessarily the content, but the skills I think that they develop, that shows a positive trend line. And as the SAT, as we talked about, it's shifted midway through my time here, you know, the top trend line is when we were operating under the three sections of the SAT. The bottom trend line is under the two sections of the SAT. And again, I, you know, I would put the, you know, the, the point on this, that if you look at those first three data points under the two section, it's heading in the right direction. And then this thing called COVID happened, I, I wouldn't look at those middle two data points. But if you start looking at the next four, I think if we start to see those go out over a five-year time, I think you're going to start to see a positive trend line again. So truly has been an honor to, to kind of lead the academic program here and helping our students find success and prepare them for entering into their world that they want to pursue. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Shola.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening. Something we added to this year's report is our P-VOS data. Dr. Davis opened the presentation commenting that we meet kids where they are and grow them. So it's really important for us to look over time, from a single point of achievement to the next, to see if we are growing our students from where they are. P-VOS uses a growth indicator, you'll see the visual representation on the screen. And what it means is that we look every year to see if our kids are meeting standard growth, and we look for the dot to fall in the green section or right on that dotted line. The more positive you go, you move into the blue, and if you are not showing growth, we move down to the yellow or the red. When we see a little extra comma at the end, it shows that our students have a growth index that's greater than a 3.0. Oh, thank you. You got it? Okay, I got it, I can get it. Thanks. So what did the colors tell us? So again, the, the growth standard is between a negative 1 and a 1. If it's green and it moves up to a 2, if it's greater than a 2, you'll see a little comma at the end with a little indicator that shows it's greater than. So we look at our P-VOS growth in grades four, five, six, seven, and eight, you'll see that we were well above our growth expectations in almost all grades, and we meet expectations in seventh grade. That's really positive news for us, that we are meeting kids where they are and we're growing them within. Same thing happens with ELA. We are well above or above growth expectations across the board in grades four through eight on the PSSA as well.
Jeez, please.
When you look at Keystone exams, you'll see the same thing. We are well above growth expectations on our Keystone exams for all three tested subjects, Algebra, Biology, and Literature. Our PSSA results are shown on this, on the screen comparing our local scores to our state. We, again, are exceeding our state scores by a measurable amount. You'll see that our overall ELA score is an 80.5, where our state is falling to 48.5. And for math, 73.3 is the Mount Lebanon result with a 41.7 in math. This year, there was not a science test, that's why there's no results shown. It was in a pilot year, we will see results after this year's assessment. For grades three through five, Mount Lebanon is in blue and our state comparators are in yellow. Again, we are exceeding our state results very well in all, both ELA and math in grades three, four, and five. And you'll see the same thing with grades six through eight. Mount Lebanon in blue, the state in yellow, where we are exceeding our state scores in both ELA and math as well. When it comes to looking at our comparators, adding that into the mix, we see, again, similar trend lines. We are still keeping competitive with our comparator districts. We have been monitoring closely what those results are looking like. When I look at our ELA scores and what our comparators are, the distance between the highest performing group and us is less than four points. So we are not far away, we could do it. If we wanted to stretch a little bit more, we could do it. When we look at math, again, we are seeing similar trend lines with our comparator districts. The, the gap is a little bit more with about an eight-point difference between the highest district and us, but we are, that's not far, that's not far away when you, when you consider those tests. And then our last is when we're looking at subgroups. We look at subgroups to say, where do we have to kind of focus our attention and what area can we look at to see where performance could be achieved or improved? And we, again, notice that our English Language Learner Group is our group with the biggest area of need. We did put some emphasis on that program. We're working with EIU to supplement some more programs and services to what they already provide. It's a slow-moving change, but we're hoping to see some big impacts over time. And the same thing is true for our math performance, still showing our English Language Learners as the subgroup needing the most attention. So our guiding philosophy, when we, when we sit back and review all of this data and say, where do we need to go from here, it's continuous improvement, right? We can be achieving higher than our peers, we can be achieving higher than the state, but we always say there's always room for growth and, and there's always room for improvement within our district. So we have implemented a comprehensive curriculum review cycle that will put our eyes and our hands at work on our, all of our programs over a six-year cycle to keep us fresh, to keep us relevant, to consider our resources, do we need to update, change, et cetera. We are expanding interdisciplinary learning and performance-based assessments, more hands-on, more performance-based assessments over traditional testing. We're examining the role of AI and how that plays a part in K-12 curriculum, how that plays a part in K-12 teaching, all the things that that could implement or, or help with. We are, continue to implement the principles of UDL to support all of our learners. We're going to continue to use data to refine our curriculum, refine our instructional strategies, and resource our materials. We want to continue to deliver professional development opportunities for our staff, our teachers, our administrators to become more proficient in instructional leadership. Our key areas of focus, we're going to develop a high-quality, innovative education to meet the unique needs of all learners, provide rigorous and relevant curriculum to empower students to reach their individual full potential, cultivate an environment that prioritizes leadership development by strengthening our programs and equipping all learners with future-ready skills, very evident in our strategic plan, and create a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment by prioritizing physical and emotional well-being and building a positive culture where every student feels respected and inspired to grow. And lastly, we always appreciate the accolades, right? As we shared earlier in the year, Mount Lebanon was voted the number one district with best teachers in Pennsylvania, according to NISH, number two, best school district in the Pittsburgh area, number three, best district in athletes in the Pittsburgh area, and number four, best school district in Pennsylvania. And of course, very proud that Mount Lebanon High School is number one in Pittsburgh from the metro area in US News, and our rail accreditation in 2024. Thank you. Any questions we can answer?
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you both for the thoroughness of this report, all the details that you provided. I want to go back to P-VOS, and, you know, I'm a big fan of metrics on, on growth, I think it's a very important thing to, to focus on. Can you just describe how P-VOS works? Is it a pre-post assessment? Is it year over year? Can you just describe how that evaluation takes place?
Yeah, so it does take account, it does take into consideration the group, the growth measure by looking at the standard error and applying a reliability factor to the data. I could look up the methodology and get that too for certain, but what I shared tonight was solely based on the PSSA data, so it wasn't an achievement prior to achieving in the spring to say if we grew. And I call it just PSSA, year over year.
Okay, so that grade, looking at the previous year, and then looking at it again.
Yes, and I call out PSSA because we did start to upload some aims and math data in that, and eventually we would be able to use all of the data in that system to calculate that growth, so it'd be more than just one measure.
Because then you're getting quarterly marks as opposed to just annual.
We would get three times a year.
Three times a year.
Yeah, with, with the added of the PSSA. We did not look at that in this report, because it was only one assessment. We uploaded one time last year, so we didn't want it as.
So not so much of a question as an observation, but I would just like to point out that when you, you, you started the presentation with the statement that when you set high expectations, you receive high outcomes. And that's evident on every slide here, and having listened to several of these year by year, I see the trend, I also, for the positive, and I also see and recognize that where we've asked questions, particularly for the disaggregated data and some of the other things, you've been responsive and put that information in here, so I want to recognize that and I appreciate it. And also, I think we have just so much to be proud of, and this is tremendous data, it's backed by every possible measure that you could have here is showing a positive trend. And Dr. Davis, I like your charts at the end that specifically show over the course of your time in this role, the growth that you've brought to, to our students, particularly by your leadership, and then the leadership of your Curriculum Council, and the leadership of our principals, and the leadership of our teachers. So from a top-down approach, we're seeing so much progress. So thank you to everyone who's involved in claiming a piece of this progress for our
All right, thank you both. And thank you to our administrative team. We now have our student representative reports from Mr. Adams and Ms. Antunes.
Good evening, everyone. It's been another great month from us, so we're excited to share what we've been up to. Last week, the SEC held trials for the Lebo's Got Talent, Talent Show, which will take place on December 3rd. Last week, the S E C held trials for the Lebo's Got Talent Show, which will take place on December third. We received numerous in-person and virtual auditions, so we're excited to see everyone perform. We're also hosting the annual winner blood drive. This will take place on November twentieth, and anyone sixteen or over can sign up to donate blood. The third annual Lebo Legacy Bachi Tournament will also take place next month on the nineteenth. Students and faculty can sign up by November twentieth to play on a team, referee, or volunteer to help. The Junior Class Council is hosting its November food drive from today until the twenty-first. Students can bring in any canned goods, hygiene products, dry goods, and other non-perishable items to their homeroom while they'll be collecting. S E C has also decided to push back the snowball dance to March seventh due to a significant number of students being unavailable in the earlier weeks because of team and other club conflicts.
To continue, on Friday, November seventh and Saturday, November eighth, twenty students from our high school, including Henry and I, had the privilege of attending the Pennsylvania Association of Student Councils, or the P A S C State Convention. This annual convention connects student leaders from across the state through service projects, student-led workshops, and leadership training. We were honored to hear from Mr. Scott Bakovich, a youth motivational speaker who engages teens by speaking at their level. He emphasized that our council should be giving just as much as they are receiving. We also had the opportunity to network, share ideas, and discuss school-wide initiatives and concerns with more than five hundred delegates from across the Commonwealth. We're also very excited to share that, in partnership with the P A Board of Education and the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, or P S B A, we'll be hosting a school board representative training. It'll include a brief presentation on what a school board is and how it serves as a powerful tool for student advocacy, followed up by a Q and A with three school board representatives from Pittsburgh, Philly, and State College. It will take place tomorrow virtually and will be open to students from all across the state. Thank you all so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. I hope that you're not invoking snow in March, though, by that move. That'd be a bummer. We're now moving on to board member reports. Policy Committee, Ms. Guth?
Sure. One second. For some reason, I can't find them. Okay, sorry. This month, we discussed numerous policies and retiring a couple. We are going to vote on tonight, two-twenty-three, Use of Bicycle, Scooters, Motor Vehicles, and Other Micro Mobility; one-hundred, Comprehensive Planning; one-thirteen-point-three, Screening and Evaluations for Students with Disabilities; one-seventeen, Homebound Instruction; one-twenty-two, Extracurricular Activities; one-twenty-three, Interscholastic Athletics; one-twenty-three-point-one, Concussion Management; one-twenty-three-point-two, Setting Cardiac Arrest; and one-twenty-four, Alternative Instruction; one-thirty-eight, Language Instruction Educational Program for English Language Learners; and nine-thirteen, which is Non-School Organizations, Groups, and Individuals. And we will also be retiring K F A A, I H B A, I H B F, and I H B E A. Thank you.
Thank you. P S B A and Board Development, Ms. Gelman?
So Ms. Burdock and I wanted to give a quick update in regard to the P S B A School Leadership Conference that we attended. I'll let you go first and then follow up. And we do have an attached report that kind of just has more detail in regard to the sessions that we attended.
Yes, okay, so we appreciated the opportunity to represent Mount Lebanon. It was important to us to be advocates to our P S B A on behalf of our value system here and to participate in the voting at the 2025 Delegate Assembly that was held adjacent to the Learning Conference. There were one hundred and forty people in attendance, and the reason that we chose to attend is to direct advocacy to the state legislators on issues of public education, advocacy being one of our key responsibilities as board members. There were several items that we voted on, proposed changes for the 2026 P S B A legislative platform and all of the motions that were brought before the delegates passed. They included limitations to the use of A I in scoring student-written responses, language changes to the inclusivity statement to better reflect the priority that school personnel reflect the full diversity of student body, and not just in race, but in other broader range of identities to include language, disability, religion, and other backgrounds. And there were several sections that, because specifically of Act Fifty-Five in 2024, they were redundant, and so they elected to be removed from the legislative platform. So that concludes the part about the delegate assembly. And then regarding the conference, Mrs. Gelman and I attended at the at the general session and several then elective courses that we were able to take throughout the time. And we greatly benefited from that, but our whole board would benefit. The purpose of our sharing, some of what we learned there, is that it would benefit the whole board. The general session was brought to us by Christine Porath, who's the author of Mastering Civility: A Manifesto for the Workplace. And she has written this book and done a great deal of research in terms of positive personal outcomes among teams, such as ours or such as teams who exist in the workplace. And she found and addressed head-on that a byproduct of our rapid communication patterns has unfortunately led to rudeness and incivility has become part of a problem that teams sometimes encounter and that that can be contagious. And that she found in her research that positivity and civility in terms of communication is equally contagious as well. So she has a number of pointers. I put in the YouTube summary of her book, because I doubt very much that all of us have time to read her entire book, but there's an eleven-minute encapsulation of her findings. So I would encourage you to click on that. She did develop a civil behavior test for individuals and found that, so highlighted on here that eighty percent of us think that we are self-aware in terms of our interactions and encounters with our fellow board members. But her test shows that thirty percent is actually a more accurate number and identified some action steps, like honing in on blind spots, establishing some folks who can give us loving criticism and accurate goal opportunities, and to develop a user's manual as a board or as a team for concrete ways on how to interact with one another and develop like how we think and respond. That was the overview of the general session. As you scroll through the document that I put together, you can see some of the ones that I went to and some of the ones that Eva went to. The first day, we primarily addressed communication and team member interaction. Everyone likes to be heard, but can you listen? So they were suggesting that school governance is an act of civic engagement and to remember that a board table is a micro view of the democratic process and that we are, as Americans, designed to exist with two opposing viewpoints and to live within that tension with grace and grit. That was a quote that I wrote down that I benefited from. I thought a lot about that one. I attended a policy and governance summary, just to remind us as a board that the P S B A has resources available to us to assist other local boards with policy revisions. They help us answer that question. Do our local values are represented in the policy? Do they have a legal precedent? And that is continuously updated by the P S B A. I went to several of the workshops on finance and the economy. At the time of this presentation, we had not yet passed a state budget, and so there were, some of that is hopefully resolving at this point in November. But one of the presentations that I went to was the State of the Economy and Its Impact on Investment Rates, particularly varying debt structures and when to renew and restructure debt to the advantage of the long-term investments for capital improvement projects. And we discussed advantageous bond restructuring for cap. Yeah, I just said that, capital improvement loans. I also went to a workshop that was specifically, so school governance, financial concepts. The presenter was an assistant superintendent out in Bristol Township School District. He indicated, and I think we've discussed this at our table, but really brought home the idea that the impact and the delay on that state budget getting passed resulted in accumulating less interest here on the local level, brought through the point that schools don't have a rainy day fund. That's a misnomer that's often discussed. We don't have such a thing, that that is, all of our dollars are accounted for. And taxpayers are supporting, at the time when there was a big zero from the state and from the feds, taxpayers were supporting schools entirely at the present time of that presentation. They reviewed the Act One Index and how it's calculated. That was a review, but helpful, and indicated that if your local economy's not growing and state funds aren't coming in at an increased level, then the school district either has to raise property taxes or cut products, programs, and services. So in other words, if last year's taxes paid for last year's expenses, but then wages increased, inflation increased, then last year's budget is not going to cover future needs. So they were advocating for making sure that one of our essential roles is to fund this industry. Eva?
Thank you. All right, I also attended several sessions. And I'll just add one quick note to the keynote that Melinda mentioned, or Ms. Burdock mentioned. She shared an example from her brother. His name was Mike Porath, who founded a site called The Mighty, and I would encourage everybody to look it up. It's one of the largest digital health communities in the world, supporting millions of people with chronic illnesses, disability, and mental health challenges. Its mission is to help people feel seen, heard, and supported, which reinforced her core message, when people feel acknowledged, they thrive. Just a cool site. I also attended the Listening Skills Session that Ms. Burdock referenced, which examined how boards can ensure that every voice feels heard, even when perspectives are different. Another session explored board superintendent relationships and reinforced the importance of role clarity, shared goals, and consistent structured communication practices essential for stable, student-centered leadership. And then I participated in an E Colors Leadership Workshop, which we're hoping maybe we could bring to our own full board development. But it looked at how different communication styles influence teamwork and decision-making. The session emphasized how greater self-awareness and understanding of each other's styles can help boards communicate more effectively, especially during complex or high-pressured moments. All participants got to complete the E Colors assessment. Mine came out as red over green. I got a two-page assessment, if anybody's interested in what it means. But it was useful to see how understanding our own styles and each other's can help us work more effectively as a governance team. My favorite session was led by the Governor Mifflin School District Superintendent and Board President. They shared practical strategies for strengthening board culture, aligning leadership around shared values, and engaging community partners in meaningful ways. They presented their version of a portrait of a school board member, a framework that defines their behaviors, commitments, and values expected of board members. I just thought it was something that we could possibly consider as we do also do full board training. And the closing keynote was from actor and advocate Sean Aston, which you may remember from Rudy, from The Goonies and from The Lord of the Rings. He was awesome. He spoke candidly about resilience, humility, and leading with authenticity, drawing on his own personal challenges in lifelong mental health advocacy, really reinforcing the many themes that were throughout the conference. Lastly, I appreciated the opportunity to meet and network with school directors, administrators from across the Commonwealth, and enjoyed hearing about their experiences, challenges, and innovative practices. So all in all, it was very good.
Thank you. Thank you both for attending and representing us and for bringing back your notes and fruitful fodder for future board training this spring. M L F E, Mrs. Gensel?
Yeah, the M L F E will be meeting December fourth to review the grant applications. I believe the grants are due November twenty-first. And we have a good number so far that have been submitted, so we'll look forward to seeing those. And then P T A Council, I just direct all board members to the most recent board update where Dr. Fries really reviewed most of what we talked about. But the other thing that I wanted to highlight, and forgive me if I'm getting any of this wrong, but before the pandemic, the district would do a district-wide food drive, and we're bringing that back. And it's going to benefit the Arlington School, which is in the Arlington section of Pittsburgh. There's a large portion of students there who do not have weekend food access, so we'll be helping them out. And felt like it was a good choice because the community is also a walking community. And yeah, so that'll be great to bring that back. That's all.
Thank you very much. Municipal liaison and Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Crable?
Sure, short report, but hopefully exciting for everyone. The municipality has completed and passed their budget, and they will not be raising taxes this year. And some fun coming up, so Beverly Bright Night is on Thursday, December fourth, seven to eight-thirty. And the Uptown Winter Market is Saturday, December sixth, from twelve to five, with the tree lighting at five. So that's it. Lot of good news.
Parkway West, Ms. Johnson?
So the Parkway meeting was moved due to Election Day to Friday morning, November seventh. And just as a note, because I know we're dealing with the budget now, Parkway J O C approved the P S B A resolution concerning the ongoing state budget impasse for the twenty twenty-five twenty-two basic school year for career in tech education. We also recognized two students of the month from Cannon-McMillan and Moon Township. And that is it. And I'm going to turn it over to Brenna in December.
Yeah, just as a note, Mrs. Gelman did bring forward a model resolution from the P S B A to encourage the passing of a state budget. But since that finally occurred between our discussion and regular meeting, though we are in full support of it having passed, we did not bring it up on the agenda. The Pathfinder School, Mrs. Burdock?
Very brief update. There are two new employees hired, and there are still open positions. There are eighty-four students enrolled at the time of our meeting this month. We refinanced a bond in order to take advantage of the better rates earlier this fall. And the students have had a lot of fun this fall, highlighting their Apple Festival, their costume party, their Bachi Team Tournament, and an upcoming Friendsgiving event.
Thank you. For CHASTA, I will say that CHASTA did have a professional learning opportunity last week for school directors and administrators focusing on First Amendment principles as well as some, how a legal update on how courts are, I'm sorry, emerging challenges posted by A I-generated images. I was unable to attend because I was traveling, but I know that several, at least three or more of our directors, were able to attend that professional development opportunity at Upper St. Clair High School. Civic engagement, Mr. Hoffman?
New update this week, this month.
This month. Excellent. All right, now we are up to the portion for comments and residence from taxpayers. This is concerning action items for this meeting, so the voting items that are coming up on tonight's agenda. Nobody has previously requested to speak. As a reminder, we are not able to accept comment online. So those wishing to speak either on action items or following the meeting should do so here in person. We are looking at various ways to resolve that issue. And I believe our January Policy Committee and then Board Meeting will look to changing our public comment policy to accommodate public comment from folks who are not attending in person. At any rate, if there is anyone who wishes to comment on action items for this meeting, please approach the podium. please approach the podium. Okay. And we have no unfinished business for board consideration or action, so we'll move on to new business. All items of new business have been discussed except for those marked with an asterisk at our discussion meeting last Monday. The first section is policy. Mr. Hoffman, would you please read the resolution?
Sure thing. I move that it be resolved that the board adopts policies 223 use of bicycles, scooters and motor vehicles and other micro mobility, 100 comprehensive planning, 113.3 screening and valuations for students with disabilities, 117 homebound instruction, 122 extracurricular activities, 913 non-school organizations, groups, individuals, 123 interscholastic athletics, 123.1 concussion management, 123.2 sudden cardiac arrest, 124 alternative instruction and 138 language instruction educational program for English language learners and retires KFFA, KFAA use on school property of bicycles, skateboards, rollerblades and other devices, IHBA independent educational evaluation, IHBF homebound instruction and IHBEA English Language Learners Program.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments or discussion on the policies up for adoption or retirement? All right. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick.
To item 223, I vote no and I vote yes to all the rest.
Mrs. Crable. Ms. Fleischer.
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman.
I will be voting no for policy 223, and I'd like to explain why. I do not believe age limits belong in this policy and the current language creates ambiguity for families and principals. The policy states that travel to and from school is a family responsibility, yet only permits grade six through 12, which conflicts with that purpose. I would support discouraging language for younger students while allowing families to make that decision, but the policy as written does not provide the clarity or consistency with its own stated intent that I believe is necessary as we pass policy. I also believe that we should revisit this once the municipality releases its updated active transportation plan. And I vote yes for the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Gensel.
Aye.
Ms. Guth.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Wyland. The next section is our finance section, inclusive of our treasurer's report, our monthly list of bills, which have been updated to add a second list of bills for November, our list of tax refunds for October 2025, our budgetary transfers for November, our AIU joint purchase and consortium agreement for 2026-27 and on Holly Consulting Group Agreement. Mrs. Gelman, can you please read the resolution?
Sure. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the finance agenda items.
Second.
Any questions, comments or discussion on the finance items? Okay. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick.
Aye.
Mrs. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer.
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman.
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel.
Aye.
Ms. Guth.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Wyland.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay. Our next section is the human resources items, including an updated personnel report. Would you read the resolution, please, Mrs. Gensel?
I move that it be resolved that the board approves the human resources agenda items.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments or discussion on these items? Excellent. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick.
Aye.
Mrs. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer.
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman.
Aye.
Ms. Gensel.
Aye.
Ms. Guth.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Wyland.
Aye.
Okay. The next section is curriculum and instruction, including the 2026-27 school calendar, the approval of graduation requirements and course offerings, and college and high school enrollment agreement with Point Park, a boys' basketball trip to Jefferson City, Missouri, a Mount Lebanon High School Association trip to Culver, Indiana, and a girls' basketball trip to Crownsville, Maryland. Would you read the resolution, please, Mr. Wyland?
Sure. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the curriculum and instruction agenda items.
Second. Excellent. Any questions, comments or discussion on these curriculum and instruction items?
I just want to, if it's okay, I'd like to say just a couple things in regard to the CHS partnership.
Yes, please.
I support expanding our CHS partnerships and I appreciate the work that goes into creating these opportunities. My comments tonight are really just about ensuring that the families clearly understand what they are paying for with this particular CHS option. The credit is tied to our very rigorous Honors Linear Algebra course, a course typically taken by our strongest math students in 11th or 12th grade, which must be taken concurrently with or after Calc AB or BC. However, the proposed college designation attached to it is pre-linear algebra, which doesn't seem to function as a prerequisite for linear algebra, even at Point Park, or at least I couldn't find, or institutions like Pitt or Penn State where many of our graduates apply. So I wasn't able to find any pre-linear algebra course at any other local university. Again, just just looking at my searching. Several neighboring districts offer CH credit for fully cataloged linear algebra courses. So before we ask families to pay for the credit, I think it's important that we understand its actual academic value and what the Math 195 pre-linear algebra credit would realistically count for. And I could tell you what some of those those courses that are in neighboring schools that do count for actual linear algebra class, not pre-linear algebra class. Two last points, the sliding scale cost model, which I know is is a thing, but I just wanted to make reference to it because it it basically dictates where the price changes based on how many students enroll in the college credit course. It's a little different than the flat pay credit pricing that families are used to with a Pitt or Penn State type of place. So it's I'm not sure if that's in the benefit of our students. And then lastly, I'm not saying we shouldn't move forward, but I'd like to see clarification on how this course, pre-linear algebra transfers at schools like a Pitt or Penn State, since we do have so many students applying them, so they understand it. And I understand that they don't have to do it, but that it would count towards a required major course or prerequisite course, not just a general extra course that doesn't count for anything. I fully support offering the course, the Honors Linear Algebra course. I just want to make sure that it's that it's transparent. I also noticed that the contract says linear algebra and not Honors Linear Algebra. And so I thought that I'd point that out because shouldn't the agreement list that the course is rather at Mount Lebanon High School? And that's it.
Can I just add something? Because I think it's important, since you brought that up, that they have the other part of, you know, our response to your questions.
Of course.
So for these courses, there would be a disclaimer that is not guaranteed that a university would accept the credit. This is the same process we use for students who take AP exams. We inform students that each university has different standards they apply, and we also can't guarantee how they will apply the course as credits. Universities generally determine eligibility by considering the student's intended major and then can apply it as a direct equivalent credit, general elective credit, which counts towards graduation, but not a specific requirement, subject area credit, which counts as a humanities credit, or will not accept it, is the other option. At Point Park, the same process applies. It will be applied as a direct equivalent or general elective credit based on the student's major, and no matter what, it will be applied as a credit towards graduation. I contacted Rick Michler, who was our contact at Point Park, which is where this course is being offered. He did also explain that they're a part of middle states so that the other local universities, like the University of Pittsburgh or Penn State, would apply it in the same manner. We hope to add college and high school courses as options for students who want to explore college-level courses without being tied to a single exam. One of our goals in the strategic plan is to offer more dual enrollment courses. The courses follow a college syllabus, which offers them the ability to explore college-level work before they commit to a college. And college and high school courses strengthen a student's transcript and apply less pressure due to the lack of a single exam to determine success. Linear algebra is the first course that we secured with a partner. This course is currently not eligible for college credit because it's not offered as an AP exam. And if a student chooses to take the linear algebra class, they can still engage at the college-level course experience without paying for the credits. Point Park does offer this course at a much lower rate than the other universities that we've been looking at, which is like the University of Pittsburgh is another example.
Other questions or comments on the curriculum and instruction items? Excellent. Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick.
Aye.
Mrs. Crable.
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer.
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman.
Aye.
Mrs. Gensel.
Aye.
Ms. Guth.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Wyland.
Aye.
Okay. That concludes the voting portion. So now we are open to questions or comments from residents. Presentations or comments are to be limited to three minutes. If anyone would like to offer comment, please approach the podium and state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Bruce Slater from 140 Skylark Circle. I'd like to commend the three that are retiring for diligence and putting up with everybody. One thing, I just to add a little humor, my daughter teaches out in Las Vegas. And a couple of years ago, she did a parent teacher conference with two kids from GM of the Raiders out there, the same session, same time, head coach's kid, one kid, and also the head trainer's kid. But she asked them to, can you bring in some players to talk to the students? And then she went on ahead and got some police also, and got some players and two authors, children's book authors, to come in to talk to the kids. One came flew in from Florida to do it. And but you're too young to Art Linklater show on when I was little, kids will say the darnedest things. And when the players are there, they're huge. One guy about the same size as Watt and the Steelers and plays the same position, actually. I saw him standing side by side and they're about the same. And the kids are looking like this. How big are you? You know, and it reminded me of a kindergarten cop, you know? And they would ask, what's all those tattoos? Your arms are so big, you know? And they just ask the darnedest questions and it just added humor to for everybody. And then about a week, a couple of weeks ago, a kindergarten, one of her students in the libraries came up to her and said, boy, you're a giant. My daughter's like 4'11". And but the kindergarten boy is about her height. So but she gets she gets a lot of humor being around kids. And I guess that's one of the reasons I officiated swimming for so long, kids from five years old to 90. I've done in colleges and a lot of stuff. It's just fun to be around people, you know? And I'm helping out at basketball games now because my knees gave out on me. But I just like being around people and having fun with everybody. Have good luck.
I think that's just what the first graders said to Dr. Fries when she read to them on Veterans Day.
Since the law of the elementary principals are here, maybe they can offer a couple anecdotes.
Look at the time. Look at the time. Anybody else wish to offer comment? Okay. I'd like to announce our upcoming public meetings. On December 1st at 7:30 PM, we'll hold the board reorganization meeting at D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School and via Zoom. And on December 8th, 2025 at 7:30 PM, we'll have a joint discussion and regular meeting in room D 205 of the high school and via Zoom. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, guys.